Good evening, this is Charles. This is the fire, the city of Mexico, University of San Antonio, Department of Fire and Rescue.
Thank you, please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you today grateful for all the blessings you have provided each of us. We pray for your guidance and wisdom as we work on issues meaningful to the health, safety, and prosperity of others. We ask that you bless our elected officials and that your presence is with them in their duties. I pray you help guide us as we work on local issues and make decisions without bias or judgment. We pray for our public servicemen and women and ask that you bless them with courage and health as they continually give of themselves. We ask for guidance and healing to all of us that are suffering and that you bring them peace. We pray for resolution of conflicts and efforts to help one another. We pray for our nation, the world, and our local community and one another. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
Welcome, everybody. We will go ahead and get started with our time agenda. First item is public comments and announcements.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Seven eighties. And commissioners, this morning, I'm back again. The same problem, different day. I've been coming visiting for a while now. I always said, one of these questions, I go back home and I feel like I didn't accomplish nothing. And that what I had said wasn't worth it. Wow, you know, but my problem is that I got this before even the first Harvey, Harvey traitors and they don't have no plumbing. And one of them, I brought some papers to the commissioners the last time, showing that there was water underneath a traitor. So they moved that guy, even one of the Harveys to the back over there. He's doing the same thing over there. That Harvey doesn't have no plumbing. So now the problem was over here, now they moved to over there. So, I mean, I wish somebody would, you know, would take time out and just to go and check it out. And if I'm wrong, let me know if I'm wrong, you know? I hate to be wasting my time and your time also, you know, with the same problem which I've had for over a long, long time, you know? And I'm not asking for a million dollars or two million dollars. I'm just asking somebody to look into it, look into it, and prove that I'm wrong. Prove that I'm wrong and now come into the meetings, you know, so you guys do something else with that time. And I would appreciate if you guys look at it, you know? And, but I don't mind. I got so much things to say. One meeting I have with the county manager and I told him what I feel about that I have. I'm the type of person that even where I'm living at, I have to have a diary every day. I write everything that happens every day. And I have to be real careful with my neighbors because, and the thing is, if the problem is not getting any better, and I hope and pray to the Guru that I can get some help very soon. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments or announcements this morning?
Morning commissioners. Chief Souza from the fire department asked me to come and read this letter, if y'all have got the time. Dear Chairwoman Cordova and members of the Eddy County Commission, on behalf of the city of Carlsbad and the Carlsbad Fire Department, I would like to thank the Eddy County Commission for the support of the Carlsbad Fire Department and its digital radio system transition through the proposed MOU which was drafted and approved earlier this year. In June 2025, the commission voted to approve an MOU between Carlsbad Fire Department and Eddy County Fire Rescue to permit usage of ECFR's DTRS membership during a transitionary period as CFD moved towards joining the system on its own. CFD has since decided to expedite membership to the DTRS and therefore will no longer require the MOU. However, the willingness of our county partners to assist us is a testament to the collaboration and cooperation that we strive for every day between our two organizations. In fact, ECFR continues to support and assist us during this transition through the temporary use of certain equipment as we procure our own. I'm aware of the challenges and difficulties that can exist between both the city and the county as both entities endeavor to enhance the life of our citizens. But I am confident that Carlsbad Fire Department and Eddy County Fire Rescue will always work to resolve any such differences for the service, safety, and health of those we are called to serve and the betterment of our community. Once again, thank you to ECFR Fire Chief Josh Mack, County Manager Mike Gallagher, and the Eddy County Commission for the continued support. Respectfully, Tony Souza, Fire Chief. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
No other public comments this morning? Okay, we will be moving into our service awards. We have a few service awards to give out this morning. A few people I don't believe are present, however, we're still going to recognize them. Our first service award this morning, we have Miguel Wadi Detention Center, 20 years. Next, we have Frederick Dominguez Public Works, 10 years.
One, two, three.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Alexandra Chavaria Assessors Office, 5 years.
One, two.
We now have a retirement presentation for Ms. Rhonda Nelson, clerk office, 22 years. Thank you.
One, two.
Thanks so much. We'll just take a short break for pictures out at the walkway here and then we'll be right back in.
She went downstairs for right now.
I said she ran.
Distribution out loving possible in many months, and so we really appreciate that. If you look at the big gray box on the circle, that's sixty years plus, it's just under forty percent. Again, so a lot of the folks that we're helping on a day-to-day basis are our seniors. This is just a, you guys know this already because you do such a good job of coming out and helping us. And then, the traditional role of United Way of Eddie County, when you think of us, is the allocation agency, a partner agency. That model's changed a little bit, but I did want y'all to know that's continuing. All the good folks around town, Boys and Girls Club, Better Family Shelter, Community of Hope, et cetera. We continue to provide grants to them, as well as Grammy's House, Oasis Women's Services. That's a big part of what we do, it's just not all of what we do. You guys have been great, this is a little Eddie County friendly slide. As y'all know, you guys have been just great partners on a variety of ways, and we really appreciate it. One of them I wanted to talk about was Day of Care, and you guys helped us with our kickoff in two different parts of the county. Helped us with, you know, get breakfast going, we had three hundred volunteers, we had eighteen projects. We had commissioners reading to kids, we had commissioners giving out food. And Day of Care is my favorite day of the year, again, I'm very frugal. When kids give us little coin baskets, they're not thinking that I'm gonna use it to fix my toilet at the office or buy an HVAC. They picture us helping people, so I hate using donated money to fix things around the office, and I think good nonprofits are like that. And so when other folks come and paint and weed and do those things for us, we can spend that money on paying somebody's water bill. So that's how I'd like it to go. And then, let's see, two more slides and I'll let you go. This is stuff the boss, Eddie County, had a team out there. We positioned ourselves in front of Walmart for three days, we harassed every single person who walks into that Walmart. And we get a ton of school supplies, it was hard to get in and out of the building. We help financially with some of the other school supply drives. But what the ones we get do is they go directly to the schools, because we've heard lots of stories about teachers having to dip into their own pocket to buy supplies for kids. And so that's why we did it the way we did it. It's hot, it's the middle of June and July, but it's a, it's a good event. And then, last but not least, oh, oh, come on. There we go. This is just a stewardship slide, I love the chaos of my, my job. I came to work and a hotel guy calls, hey, we got eighty beds and mattresses, what should we do with them? So we called Devon Energy, see if they can help pick some up. We set up, we called the different shelters, get some of those beds and mattresses to them. We set up a thing with, we got rid of about forty of them that way, the other forty, we had people come by and pick up. We set up a thing where we kind of processed that. And I love being able to pivot a little bit and be, have a little bit of flexibility where we can kind of adjust to our needs. We have a scholarship program, and then I think, as you guys know, we have several fundraisers, one of them being Dancing with the Stars. Last year Sheriff Hutchinson was, was graceful enough to be, to be one of our competitors. Commissioner Clayne, graceful being the operative word there. Commissioner Clayne was one of our judges and has agreed to be a judge again next year, this year. The event is March twentieth, I hope to see many of you there. We're still looking for some male and female competitors, so feel free to, to throw some people under the bus and, and tell them that they need to do that. But Eddie County has been great, you guys have been wonderful partners, and I hope we will continue that in many ways. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle, we appreciate your work as well as all of your volunteers' work.
Thank you very much.
And Cass will sign up to.
Okay, next we have presentation of proposed changes at Sandpoint landfill, Mr. Hazer Archer.
For Madam Chair, Commissioners. So, I just wanted to come to y'all and bring some of the learnings and findings I found at the Sandpoint landfill and some proposals to hopefully fix some stuff up, so. We'll cruise through this thing. This is our, our slide, y'all saw this in the last presentation, it's just our, our, essentially, all the important information at the landfill. Your fee schedules, the, what we take, what we don't take. How things come into us, our hours, our phone numbers, holidays. Oh, we're closed on Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's Day, other than that, we're running. So, our daily focus, this is where I started, looking at, safety is obviously number one. That, that's what we look at first and foremost, how does it achieve training of our employees and the public? Sometimes that can be rather cumbersome. So, we, we identified that we needed some signage, right? We had some things going on out there, people pulling out of their trash trailers at the wrong spots, damaging things, damaging their equipment. So, we signed it on our big tipping station where they can hook up to and pull out their sleds in a safe area, and, and it helps everyone. We try to limit our machine and public vehicle interactions, there's a twenty-five-foot minimum space put in between, all employees have signed it. We can't have machines twenty-five feet from the public dumping, just that gives us a buffer zone of kids, you know, an unexpected kid running around, or, or something dangerous happening. And limit our public on our working face, so that's what that tipping floor is for. And we never stop focusing on safety, because the second we get complacent, that's when something will happen to us. Other things we, we identified is our equipment upkeep, making sure our pre-trips are done, making sure that it has oil in it before we get started, making sure the filters are blown out, just everyday equipment maintenance, and then also lifelong equipment maintenance on all of our, our equipment. Litter control, that is one thing that we focus on heavily, we've ordered new netting out there. Some, y'all know our winds, we've had telephone poles put in place, we've added some more telephone poles. They stretch that netting across there and it catches the litter. Dust control, we're watering constantly out there, just trying to keep, try and keep the dust down. With our winds and our type of material, that, that sometimes is also a, a challenge. And then our daily cover, so that's our, our dirt going over, we're making sure all of our trash is covered every single day before we leave. This prevents things like fires. You, you have those circumstances where they're not preventable, something goes in there, a lithium battery or something, and it explodes and it causes a fire. Other things, hot coals and stuff, they get buried in there, combust and then make a fire too. And then our traffic flow, the way traffic interacts, public equipment, that, that all goes back into that too. So, I was like, how do, how do we make this right, what do I do? So me and Fabian took a trip over to Cruz's, to their tipping facility, to their tipping station. And, because I've heard that's where the state, I'm gonna get this wrong. They, they do the transfer, the transfer station and the landfill trainings, the New Mexico Environmental Department. That is where the courses are held, so, I mean, if they're up to that standard, right, this facility should be what we're trying to model. If you can see, I didn't get the best pictures in the world, but there's, on the left over there, you can see the floor where, that is where all the commercial, residential commercials, so all the trash trucks, right, from Cruz's, from the Sea of Valley. Anthony comes in there, Doniana County, all of their commercial vehicles and then like dump trailers. They're, they're taking a different type of trash than we are, of course, in, in oil-filled country. But all of their compacted trash like that, on the right-hand side, which is the third picture, you can see, that's where our residents dump, there's a big pipe across there where they have to unload their trailer, they can't just dump on the ground and push in. That keeps people from falling in to the pit. And what this does is that separates completely what I was talking about on the previous slide. The machine and the people in the public, it keeps them completely separate, so that's their safety measures going into this. And this pit style, you can see the dozer there on the right, everybody dumps in this pit, it's compacted in this pit and then pushed. They have a compactor there, they, they are thinking about removing that compactor because of the issues and the equipment cost and, and things like that. They're getting enough compaction from that dozer, that, that is something that we learned, you know, as we go over there. They, it is very high dollar to maintain the compactor, so that's probably not the best, especially for the, we get a different type of trash than they do. That's with residential household trash, we get that, and that accounts for probably sixty percent of what we have. But, other than that, we're, we're taking some stuff out there that, that would damage something like that. So, I got with Solder Miller, our own call, Engineering Service, and said, another time, another thing I did not put on the slide is waiting times at the landfill. I'm, I'm sure each of y'all have had a call about some sort of waiting time at the landfill. And, it, it's, how do we, how do we improve this? How, how do we make this better? So, this is kind of the solution I'm looking at. And with y'all's direction and, and, tell me if I'm wrong, if I'm missing something. This would allow for the public to continue to come in the normal way that everyone enters the Sandpoint, or enters the landfill. If we were able to build this road right here, coming in, we would set another set of scales, you can see that, I'm not sure if it's, right here in this area, is another set of scales, anybody automated. So, that would prevent the city of Carlsbad, it would absolutely reduce their time at waiting to nearly zero. And they wouldn't have to come through our scale house to, and they would be able to go to the separate side over there, sort of like the Cruz's setup. I would like to raise that and build a pit. What this also eliminates is people going to the face, and that would allow all the trash to be dumped into a pit where, at that point, a dozer's compacting it, and the only people that go up on the face of our dump site is our vehicles. And, and I think that would be a safety hazard that we could virtually eliminate, and I think that would be a very good option. The military trucks, so, th- this, this is my rendition, this is one hundred percent just something put together, the idea. Moving forward, I'm, I'm not sure where I need to head, but, but with your direction and discussion, it may give me a better idea. So, it's gonna cost money, right, to do this, there, there's no doubt about it. We are currently working with the BLM, well, sort of working with BLM right now. This is the future expansion that we talked about in our previous, in our previous presentation we did. We're trying to acquire that next eighty acres on the other side, this would allow for about sixty years. So, this investment would last forever, I mean, for, for my lifetime and, and most of, most of everyone else's here's lifetime. Looking forward for the future, we can still do the exact same thing and keep our trucks running, and, and this is similar to what Cruz's does as well. They have separate people, most people have to go to that tipping station that I showed you in here, and then they haul it out to the landfill on their own. We would just have everything at our landfill versus having to haul down the road. So, the military trucks, this has been a lifesaver for us, equipment-wise, as you can see. We did have one, we lost to a fire. It was, it was never really identified what actually caused the fire, it was still running, as it was on fire. And it probably would still run today too, but the insurance did claim it as a total loss. So, these military trucks, they don't get stuck, they're hardy, you can't, why say you can't kill them, you can kill them. But they are very hardy, so we put seven clutches in an on-road truck in eighteen months. We put one transmission in that same truck, so we're probably looking at them in the tune of fifteen thousand dollars. Give or take plus employee time and handling, that's just parts. And what, what I'm looking for after this as well, then you'll see the next agenda item is a proposal to buy two more of these trucks, because they are proving themselves out there, they don't get stuck. They're high enough, they have a high enough clearance, they're tough enough, they, they're just working really well for us.
Four-wheel drive, too.
Yes, sir. All of, yeah.
Those off foam tires?
Yes, so we, we actually sent on, they don't come with foam tires, but we sent them and had them foam filled, and so no more flats. That's also another thing, we've also foam filled the trailer tires. That was the majority of our expense at the landfill was, besides clutches and our on-road trucks. And, you know, there's just things that come up out of the pile and the guys aren't expecting it, and, and on-road trucks just don't cover the, don't do what we need out there, with the hardy transition and that sort of thing. So, here's just an important information slide, once again, it just covers everything. It has my number up there, the manager, the scale house, exactly how to get a hole, exactly how to get to the landfill. We encourage our public to get out there. And that's the end of that show. So, y'all have any questions for me, kind of maybe a direction to head, another way?
Are, are we asking where the trash comes from?
We are asking where the trash, trash comes from, so that, that was an issue Commissioner Bowen brought to my attention. We weren't asking, and, and there were different rates, I'm actually looking at going to possibly a flat rate. So, we don't have that issue anymore, that, that's another elimination, excuse me, that's another elimination to, uh, rid of that. Everyone be charged the same rate. I do know we are the backup landfill to Eunice, they went down a few weeks ago, so we're also in taking their trash, and that, that was where one of the wait lines come up. That doesn't happen often, but when it does, it puts us behind, puts Eunice behind, and then, so Eunice is our backup landfill, we're their backup landfill. And then if it's not, if we don't go there, we have to go to Roswell. So, it, it really puts a hinder on things, if these military trucks go down, if one of my pieces of equipment goes down, don't have enough employees show up. I, I did not ask when the last time that happened, or if it ever has happened, I'm not sure, I don't believe it has. I, I think it would have been brought to my attention at this point, if something like that. So, we definitely have to keep our landfill up and running and going, because we are, they have relied on us, and I, I faced it, so. With that, we'll move in, or, sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, do you have any more discussions? Direction?
Are they, do, or do we still have a lot of citizens going up on the face?
No, so I have moved all citizens down to the tipping station, that's where the military trucks in, and we have another truck leased that, right now that we're using. I would like to let that truck go. It just keeps two trucks running all the time to keep that, what we do have go up there is like heavy construction material, railroad ties, that sort of thing. That goes to the top in roll-off trucks. Other than that, I have directed everything to remain on that tipping floor to keep everyone off of that face.
Very good, fifty percent, well, hundred percent of the cost I got was to do being up on the face.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and, and like I said, that's the reason for the foam filled tires, because we were popping tires left and right. People were popping tires left and right, we had things coming out of the ground, and it's just not a place the public should be.
Yeah, people were not watching the equipment running, and getting calls.
Lots of near misses, and, and that's just one way that, keeping people on the ground, it, it's just so much better. And I say on the ground, keeping people on flat concrete surfaces, that eliminates a lot of, of the issue that's going on up top. They're not running over things they shouldn't, it's being cleaned off appropriately. And, that's not necessarily true all the time on the face, because you may have a piece of equipment operating a hundred yards from you. But, you know, what's right here, they can't fix while, while they're a hundred yards away.
Yeah, and they bring kids and stuff up on the way.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, pretty good.
Thank you. All right, well, I'll look to go ahead and start pursuing this and.
Yeah.
Now, this far at, we're moving into the military truck.
Oh, we, yeah, if y'all, if y'all are done discussing with me with the, with the, with that, so that, that presentation was for the, to kind of move forward with that expansion, start looking at costs, start looking at what it's gonna take to make that tipping floor out there.
Well, I think we're only getting larger, you know, as a community. When your previous presentation talking about how we're already, you know, I think ahead of what the prediction was as far as the trash flow or the cell, so that's really resonated with me, like, we have to plan, you know, moving forward to have enough room.
So, with Doniana County, we're only taking in a hundred tons less than they are daily. Yeah, it, it's, they're taking about five hundred tons, we're taking anywhere from four hundred to four hundred and fifty. So, to be conservative, we're, we're right there, about a hundred tons less than they are. When we take Eunice's trash, now we, we've surpassed them.
But that's not all.
No, 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 but if we do get into that circumstance, it is, once, it, it becomes an issue.
Well, you are doing a fabulous job, I mean, you can tell when you're driving down the Hobbs Highway, for sure. It is not.
That, that's definitely the city of Carlsbad.
Yeah.
The city of Carlsbad has definitely taken some initiative to clean up that litter.
Very useful.
They, they've taken up that litter initiative, and, and we really appreciate their, their efforts on that.
I tell you, I think we need the, the military vehicles, I think it solves a lot of our problems. Meanwhile, there's gonna be a big discussion, I'd like to move to approve the purchase of the Sandpoint area.
Motion, second, please, copy the vote.
I got it, ma'am.
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Trust?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, treasures report for August twenty twenty-five, this is just FYI only. And then we have our revenue report for August twenty twenty-five, Ms. Robert, here's all.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. For our August twenty twenty-five revenue reports, for August gross receipts tax, this is gonna be June's business activity month. For oil and gas for August, it's gonna be May's business activity month. So for August, for gross receipts tax, the county collected a little over six point five million dollars. So far this year, we've collected a little short of thirteen million. And our GRT is up about fifteen percent this time last year. Even though it's not reported, our fire excise tax, so far we've collected about five million dollars total, we collect on average about two and a half million a month. And our environmental, we're about two point five million dollars, and we collect about one point two, one point three million dollars averaging a month for environmental gross receipts tax. So for our oil and gas receipts, we collected a total of six point eight million dollars, majority of this being production. This month, we only received about thirty-eight dollars in equipment and about six hundred dollars in royalty, so majority of that was production. Again, this was for May's business activity, so the county produced over twenty-eight point eight million barrels of oil for the month, and we're averaging about fifty-eight dollars price per barrel. For gas, we had over a hundred and seventy-two point two million units, averaging about two dollars and eighty-four cents price per unit. Looking into twenty twenty-six, the EIA, which is the Energy Administration Information, their short-term energy outlook, inventories are expected to be going up as they are now, which is driving the price down. We've already seen a decrease, I know we're behind in reporting, so for September, which was June's business activity, price of the barrel was about sixty-four dollars, and then from there, it's kind of decreased to sixty-three and then sixty. Today is at fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, so we'll continue to see that decline a little bit going into twenty twenty-six. And we'll probably see it go to the low fifties. We did budget fifty-two dollars price per barrel, averaging twenty-two million barrels. So, I do not anticipate any adjustments that we're gonna have to do, because I do anticipate hitting our mark by December of twenty twenty-five. But that's something they'll prob- probably have to look at going into the twenty twenty-seven budget year. With that, I will stand for any questions on the revenue report.
Make a motion to approve the revenue report for August, second.
Motion, second, please, copy the vote.
Winova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Trust?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, for our budget versus actuals for August. Countywide, the county collected a little over eighty-eight million dollars for revenue. We're at about nineteen percent collected, without transfers at about thirty-three point eight million dollars. And for expenses, we're way below where we are, where we should be, about seventeen percent. We've expensed about four percent without transfers at fifteen point nine million dollars countywide. For general fund, overall, we've collected twenty-two point six million dollars, and we're pretty close to that, about fifteen percent collected, because we don't have much transfers in. For expenses, again, because our transfers out are so high, it is showing forty-three point five three percent expensed. But we're closer to about ten percent expensed without transfers on general fund. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Make a motion to approve the budget versus actions, second.
Motion, second, please, copy the vote.
Winova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Trust?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, presenting to you budget adjustments for this meeting. We've had quite a bit of budget adjustments this year compared to prior years, just 'cause we have so many changes of, in administration for our directors, so we're having to make some adjustments in each of the departments. I'll just go over some of these very quickly, a lot of them, they've already been brought to commission and you guys have approved of these, so I'll kind of just hit the highlights. One of the things I want to point out is for general fund, we will be decreasing general fund's cash with these budget adjustments by a little over five million dollars. The biggest reason is, we had quite a bit of adjustments in the facilities department. We're trying to align that budget with some of the priorities that we're looking into this year, so we had about one point three million dollars in budget adjustments for facilities. We did have a two million dollar adjustment that you guys prior approved, to assist with the schools for operational for daycare. A one point five million dollar transfer to finish out the Pickles Valley Drug Task Force. And we had about four hundred thousand dollars in the sheriff's office for their retention and moving that employee to general fund. So those were the biggest budget adjustments totaling up that five million dollars. Couple of other ones I wanted to point out, road fund, environmental fund, we needed to do some budget adjustments to adjust for gasoline and diesel in those funds. They did have the cash balances to absorb that, we only had about sixty-five thousand and fifty thousand in those departments. We did have to do a budget adjustment in the recreational fund for the sheriff's shooting range as well too. It did decrease the recreational funds, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we did have the cash in that fund. We also had to make some adjustments in the indigent fund, because what we budgeted for, the actual quarterly invoices are coming in less than that. So that was a positive budget adjustment for four point six million dollars. The DWI grant funds, you guys had prior approved their grant funds, so once we get that approved for the fiscal year, we go ahead and budget that. Fire excise, we had about one point one million dollars in adjustments there. The biggest was to account for some purchases that were rolled over from last fiscal year into this fiscal year. And then for fire distribution funds, you'll see here negative four point seven million dollars. They're gonna be budgeting majority of their cash rollover from prior fiscal year to this fiscal year. We did have some budget adjustments in the legislative fund for some new capital appropriations that we received and that you guys already approved. And then finally, finishing out some of the budget adjustments, we did have some modifications and amendments for our Hyde of Region Six and Pickles Valley Drug Task Force.
That motion will be approved, second.
Motion, second, please, copy the vote.
Winova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Trust?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Next, we have our Eddie County travel policy, Ms. Jessica Stanger.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We recently redid the travel policy to include a finance approval for budget and added a board county commission approval. We're removing the finance signature and putting that burden on the department to make sure they have enough budget. We're also removing the Board of County Commissioner for all out-of-state travel, it's only gonna be for travel over a three hundred and fifty dollars hotel for lodging each night. We included an exemption for the fourteen-day travel, allowing law enforcement and detention officers. And we removed the eight, ten, and twelve-hour shift forms and the language from the policy to only include eight hours within a nine-hour period in a normal workday. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thinking, my, we discussed this previously.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I think what, what we're trying to, what's being proposed here for your consideration is a way to really streamline the departments and the offices, to get more done in a less amount of time. Right now, when sheriff, the sheriff's office or public works or another department, when they go to make a purchase, the first thing they have to look at is if it's in their budget, and then they have a, a process to make that purchase. Some of those purchases, you know, are thousands of dollars, and they don't currently require commission approval. Right now, if we need to send, say, for instance, the sheriff or the clerk or someone else to say, "Love it." Right now, if we need to send, say, for instance, the sheriff or the clerk or someone else to say loving for a work, you know, work-related item, we'd have to bring that travel to the commission. It takes a tremendous amount of time on staff, a lot of, a lot of, there's a lot of time spent behind the scenes preparing these travel requests and this travel information, when oftentimes it might be a hundred and fifty-dollar night travel or, you know, a two hundred-dollar night travel to Santa Fe for a legislative topic. But the amount of staff time that's involved in preparing that sometimes exceeds the actual cost of the travel itself. Jessica mentioned a three hundred and fifty-dollar item, and that's by state statute. So do you wanna just elaborate a little bit on, on that and when that came to be, Jessica and Roberto?
The change came to us in March to implement the first of July from DFA. So that three fifty was increased, I think before it was two fifty. And we included it in the out-of-state travel because usually that's where you'll see the over three fifty in lodging out-of-state. So a lot of, so we took that language out and just made all out-of-state travel come to the commission. Now we've taken that back and just anything over three fifty per night for lodging comes to the commission instead of everything out-of-state.
I agree with Mike, I mean, anytime you're looking at internal control, you need to look at cost benefits. Look at cost exceeds the benefit, then you need to change the policy. Make a motion to be approved, second.
Motion in second.
Trost.
Trost. Cordova?
Oh, yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
I just want to sort of burn up Jessica, really good job on this, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, our next item is motion to ratify amended twenty twenty five tax rates. You're filming who was wrong.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Mr. Bronda had a previous vacation plan, so I'm here to assist cast with any questions you have.
So what, I don't know, I think all of you know by now what happened. The, an email was sent out from the FDA saying, hey, some of you people are gonna have changes to your tax rates, things like that. Immediately, this office sent said, is there something wrong with ours? No, we sent it out to everybody, so don't worry about it, you haven't gotten anything, don't worry about it. Thirty-six hours before these had to be sent out, they get an email saying, you've forgotten to put in Artesias because it is through the year twenty twenty five, and so it needs to be back in there. Now, immediately, we went back to them and talked to them, and they insisted that they were correct, and we went ahead and we made those changes. We had a miserable time getting DFA to respond because they had their own attorney set up, we don't know what to do. I mean, they didn't have any idea, but DFA did send back an order of correction that was sent to the, and they worked twenty-four, they worked all night to get it ready, the day it was due. And so they got it completed. We actually, because the order of correction came from DFA, the statute doesn't say we have to bring it back to the commission for approval, but when the attorneys were asked, do we really, do we need to do that, they couldn't answer, they said, we don't know. So we're doing this as a matter of just covering ourselves, that we had to adjust those tax rates that you earlier approved to include that amount that was for Artesia General Hospital. Is that correct?
Yes, all other tax rates remained the same, it was just adding back the Artesia Hospital tax rate.
Once, I'll make a motion to ratify.
Yeah, we will.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
They did a lot of work, let me tell you, they started work all night to get that done.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Our next item, we are going to set meeting to approve canvas of twenty twenty five regular local election held on November fourth, twenty twenty five, Ms. Stanger.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, per statute, we have been six days after the election to ten days to certify the canvas for the election, which is November fourth. The dates available are Monday, the tenth, the office is closed, the county's closed on the eleventh, and then we have the twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth.
Does anybody have any appointments? You said Monday, the tenth, you would also be working?
That is a date that the county administration has opened.
Does anyone have any, is Monday, the tenth?
I would ask for Monday or Wednesday.
I can do my best.
Monday would be good.
Well, I mean, if you just can't make it, we can make it. Okay, do we have a motion to set Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty five as approval canvas?
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Rorova?
Yes.
Okay.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty.
Is that right?
Seven, better.
Monday, tenth, eight thirty.
Six thirty to me.
I'll second that. Cordova?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Thank you. Everybody needs to vote, turnout's been low.
All right, next we have HR restructuring, Ms. Anna Waskey.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Okay, so I'm here today, we're proposing and requesting approval for organizational restructuring of the payroll function, specifically moving the payroll manager and all associated payroll functions from the finance department to the HR department. This is because we work a lot with, in my previous role as a senior assistant HR director, I worked very closely with payroll. It's like we were like, pretty much contacting each other on a daily basis. It just makes more sense in, payroll gets a lot of calls that HR gets, and we're kinda like, back and forth. No, you need to call payroll, no, you need to call HR. I think putting us all in one department, it just makes a lot more sense, and it's kinda like a one-stop shop for all our employees. They can come in, we get requests for paychecks for W-twos, then we gotta send them upstairs, and then, you know, vice versa. So there's a lot that goes on. Yeah, and originally, the reason why payroll was in the finance department is back when we were on the AS four hundred system on Triadic. There was no separation of duties, the system alone could not do the separation of duties. So due to auditing purposes to make sure those functions stayed separate, finance got payroll. Well, now, our financial system has those controls in place within the financial system, so it doesn't allow for that anyway. And like Anna said, the payroll manager, payroll function within finance, it is very separated within finance because they operate, they deal with HR on a day-to-day basis. We're on the finance side, accounts payable, procurement, grants, we all integrate on a regular basis except for payroll. Really, we're only just looking at the general ledger and how those monies hit the general ledger. So I had been talking with Anna now for a little bit to move the payroll function down to HR because I think as a whole, not only will it benefit HR, but I think it'll benefit the county as a whole. Because like Anna said, they're one in the same, and a lot of the things that the payroll manager does, it integrates with HR specifically.
I think we're all in agreement, you know, anything that the commission can do to help streamline the work that the county employees do. I mean, we're, we're open, you know, to anything like that, so, and like you said, it's a one-stop shop for employees as well, so it's. Okay, question?
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Okay, on this second agenda request, I'm requesting to reclassify my old position as the senior assistant HR director. I'm seeking approval because I'm wanting to put this into two specialized roles to get, having a dedicated HR benefit specialist and a payroll clerk to assist the payroll manager in her daily functions. So right now, currently, the way that we're set up is, since we moved downstairs, it's kind of a little difficult to have our actual receptionist help us with open enrollment because of the fact that it's a lot of personal information out there. We don't need somebody standing at the front, you know, and giving us socials and date support and stuff like that. So she can't essentially help us with that anymore, so that function falls on myself and then our two specialists. So the specialists, I want them to focus more on getting the onboarding and the recruiting process. So this would actually have one dedicated person just doing all of the HR benefits from terminations to enrollments to changes, so we have a lot of that on a daily basis. So I think this would just streamline, you know, the employees know exactly who to go to and do this, you know, get this stuff changed with. And as far as the payroll clerk goes, those duties from the assistant HR director would be split into two. There's a lot of duties that go along with that, and I know because I used to do that. And so I think it would need two people to do it, the other, the payroll specialists would be in charge of doing like verifications of employment, you know, handling the maintenance part of it, address changes, you know, all kinds of stuff that has to, you know, double printing checks, handing out W-twos, ten ninety-nine, stuff like that, so I mean, ten ninety-five Cs. So I think that would streamline our department a little bit better. And it would give us more time to focus on the duties that we actually need to do on a day-to-day. And it would take a lot of that burden off my generalists, so they could focus more on getting that onboarding faster, you know, and our employees on, onboard quicker. Any questions?
No questions, I'm ready. Motion, we have a second. Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Rorova?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item, title change of the adjustment code enforcement officer to inspector, please call for the vote.
All right, so HR partnership with fire and rescue is requesting to change the title of code enforcement officer to inspector to meet the goal of the position and align with the roles of Eddie County Fire and Rescue in the Code and Compliance Division. We are requesting the adjustment in the pay, in the pay of ten percent to bring it into line with door responsibilities as well as they will coordinate with county codes and fire codes. The increase in pay, right now, the city is currently paying inspectors and code enforcements twenty seven one, the county, we're at twenty-two sixty-one currently. The proposed change is to bring them up to the twenty-four ninety-five as the entry level. So Josh can elaborate more on as far as the duties and responsibilities of the position.
So with the transition, the two that we currently have, they're doing a great job, they've already learned the fire code side of it. Our fire code, fire inspector is working to learn, the code enforcement side is a lot easier if a complaint comes in or a call comes in. It's not sending one from one end to the county the other, they can basically take and map their days out, and it's easier for Jared to coordinate. They're able to handle every aspect of the code side, whether it be fire inspections or code enforcement.
Make a motion to be approved, second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Rorova?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Now we have title change animal control officer to animal care specialist.
This one has no financial impact, it's just a title change, so HR partnership with fire and rescue is requesting to change the title of animal control officer to animal, animal care specialist to meet the goal of the position and align with the roles of Eddie County Fire and Rescue in the Code and Compliance Division.
So for this, we're, prior, they were with the sheriff's office, so they were gonna have their badge, their identification as, what people hear is the officer portion, so we're trying to take that out to hopefully reduce those negative encounters where somebody could feel threatened by them walking up saying that they're the animal control officer or just the animal care specialist.
Make a motion to be approved.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Rorova?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Next item, we have proposal of repeal of Eddie County business licensing ordinance zero dash twenty-one dash one oh eight, Mr. Tuber.
During the September meeting, it was brought up, discussed, and the decision was made to repeal the business licensing ordinance. In order to do that, we have to do it by ordinance, and that, we need to have a motion to put this on the November agenda and go ahead and advertise for the hearing on this ordinance proposed, which is repealing the business licensing ordinance.
So move.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Rorova?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
The next one is, as a result of, when we repeal one oh, one oh eight, is this one oh eight? One oh eight, there's a reference and requirement in one oh seven on the cannabis ordinance that you have to comply with the business licensing ordinance. I could have done it by just having the two sections, two or three sections within that original ordinance. But rather than do that, I printed the whole ordinance again, so that way, so everybody's got the whole thing right in front of them, the cannabis ordinance. And that's, the changes are to get rid of that language in there about the requirement of meeting the Eddie County business licensing ordinance. And that's taken out of this, and we need to recommend the public hearing and determination whether the, the the commission approves the amendment of that ordinance.
So move, second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Rorova?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Now we have county manager Gallagher on discussion and partnering with municipalities to expand housing and projects that support the expansion of the housing.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Right now, there's approximately, I think about a hundred and fifty homes listed today on Zillow for sale between both site-built homes and manufactured homes as of, as of today. Right now, there's actually fifty-four units listed for rent in all of Eddie County between townhomes, condos, age-limited housing, site-built homes, manufactured housing. So we know that Eddie County has been and will continue to be a very fa, you know, is a growing community. We have a very, we have a pretty varied industry up north, we have some, you know, a very large federal presence. We have a nuclear presence, and we have oil and gas presence, and potash, just to name some, a few. And we wanted to see more, more expansion in healthcare. And I think a common theme that we've seen or heard regarding folks moving to Eddie County, be it Artesia or Loving or Carlsbad, has been the limitation, the limited housing inventory. Before you is a proposal to take half of our general fund surplus from the previous year, which was in excess of thirty-one million dollars, and setting aside half of that, just over fifteen point five million, and to divide, at least setting aside budgeting it, to be divided among the municipalities for housing and housing-related projects, and this is based on population. So the dollar amount they're assigned to Carlsbad and Artesia, that's based upon the populations in each of those municipalities as of the latest census count. With that, basically, you would, at the next, at a commission meeting, the board could say, hey, we're going to do a budget adjustment or approve, setting aside this fifteen and a half million. And, you know, you could use this allocation to the municipalities, or different strategy to allocate funding to the municipalities, this is my recommendation. And then I would suggest that each municipality would come to the board anytime they have a project for your consideration. So I've heard from the commissioners, you all have said housing is a top priority in this community. The Carlsbad Department of Development has expressed housing is a concern. City of, City of Carlsbad and the City of Artesia both have done that. I think we had a housing summit here a few months ago, where we had folks throughout the state came and discussed the need for more of variety of housing in all of Eddie County. So this is a, a strategy for your direction and your comments regarding how to, I guess, how to tell, inform each of the municipalities that Eddie County is willing and able to be a partner in bringing more housing to, to all of Eddie County. Again, the concept here is that this amount of funding would be set aside for the municipalities, and that, and then if Carlsbad or Artesia or Loving, they have a particular project that costs for a million dollars or half a million dollars, whatever the amount is, they'll come to this board, and this board would vote on that particular project to see if you all, if it's in alignment with what you want to see for the community. And I will stand for any questions that you may have.
And that would be on a project, a project basis.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Carlson, that's what I'm recommending, yes, sir.
Within their budgeted?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Do you see this as being a recurring deal?
Madam Chair, Commissioner. Madam Chair, Commissioner Treus, I think it's too early to tell. I think we don't know yet what our revenues would be the next couple, upcoming years. I think for now, if the board were to vote in favor of this or would like to pursue this, I would tell the municipalities, it's just, this is all it is for now. And then we watch it and then you all decide if you, if it's something that you want to continue or not. I think we'd, we'd like to see some success before, you know, pursuing this, you know, additional years.
Yeah, we don't get into any problem with the anti-donation clause.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Carlson, we don't. As we're government to government, so the funding that Eddie County would provide, let's say for Carlsbad, the ten point seven million dollars, that funding would just be straight to the city of Carlsbad. So with government to government, there's, there's no concern there with any type of the state's anti-donation clause.
I raise one more question.
Yes sir.
Since it's Carlsbad, Eddie County to Carlsbad, there would be no, they would, they would be restricted as to the use of that for that specific project.
Yeah, yeah, I would say.
Could it be doled out to other projects, it would just be for that one project.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Carlson, I believe that as each, my recommendation would be that as, if the board wanted to pursue this, if Carlsbad comes to the commission and says, hey, Eddie County, all that ten point seven, we need five million dollars for this project, then the item that we would ask this board to vote on would be the agreement between Eddie County and the city of Carlsbad for that allocation of five million dollars specific to those items.
And we would have, we would have the ability, if they come after five million, we'd say, hey, we'll give you three.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Carlson, that's it. Again, I think one of the indicators for, I think, the process for the county to work with the municipalities is one, the municipalities knowing how much funding they could receive from the county. And I think that this, this accomplished that. This accomplished that, 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 that part. The second thing is, you all get to vote on this. You are all elected, you know, individuals of this community. So you all need a vote, I would recommend you all vote on the projects and to see if they're in alignment with what you, what you feel is best for the community. So if Carlsbad comes, mayor, we're picking on you because you're here today. But I think Mayor Henry's here as well, we can pick on Mayor Henry. So let's say that, you know, the Bulldogs come and say, hey, we need four million dollars for this project. That's your vote. If you all feel that maybe two and a half million is more appropriate, then you can have that discussion and, and, and make that decision at that time.
I have one final question.
Yes sir.
How do we control that they spend it on what we say?
Yeah, so there's a few things, Madam Chair, Commissioner Carlson. One, it could be on a reimbursement basis. Second, you could provide the funding to them pursuant to an agreement. And we could have them do the report afterwards and if we find that there's an issue, then, you know, we could entertain or look at some callbacks.
Okay, and so we would, we would have that within the, whatever agreement we have.
Yes sir, yes sir, yes sir, we can do that.
The funds could be used for housing as well as things that go along with housing, right? Infrastructure costs, sewer water.
Yes sir, yeah. I mean typically what, I think, again, this is the commission's direction, commission's discretion. This is general fund, funding that we're looking at using. So if you all want to see more housing in this community, right? And you want to have, you know, not restrict the municipalities, but really, you know, mention, you know, bring about the importance of housing, then setting aside this funding for, you know, a sewer extension, a lift station for a subdivision or a new housing development, you know, an extension of a water line, curb, gut or streets for a new development, the acquisition of land maybe for a project. These are all things that you all can vote on.
Then since we have the mayors from both Carlsbad and Artesia here, could we possibly hear from either or both of y'all just kind of your thoughts on this and how it can help? How do you see this helping? Now I'd hate to put you on the spot, but you showed up.
I think we live on the spot, so whatever you want to do, let's do it. So, Madam Chairman, my name is John Henry.
Madam Chair, I'm Mayor R. Lopez.
So, you know, we appreciate any help we can get. Obviously, we would like to get as much as we possibly can. We have quite a few shovel-ready projects right now that we would use this money to better Artesia, which in fact would better Eddie County. What we're seeing in Artesia is a massive growth. We obviously have quite a few anchor companies, I would call them, or entities within Artesia that are expecting a huge influx of, of population. What we're trying to do is get ahead of that. We're actually not going to be ahead of that once again, but this is at least going to help us try to hedge up, I guess, would, would be somewhat of a word. So the faster we can, we can get these funds, the quicker we can put them to use. But yeah, we have a housing project that we would be ready to go on, I would say, as tomorrow. Obviously, we've just had a, the oil field is very familiar with dry holes unfortunately, while Artesia is now familiar with the dry hole. We were not drilling for oil, but we were drilling for water and we unfortunately hit a, hit a crevice that has messed up that project. So we've already got land reacquired right down the road from that so that we can start a new project. We're very fortunate in Artesia, we've been very aggressive for years. You know, prior leadership for, for generations in Artesia has set us up to be very successful. So our infrastructure overall is in very good shape. We bond and we use those bonds to continue to move. We're on our fourth major project to make sure that our water and sewer lines are well taken care of. So what we're needing is expansion. We're not needing to backfill old projects, we're trying to get new projects so that we can help grow Artesia and, and grow Eddie County.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I agree, obviously we all see the growth around. And it could be for any project. We're trying to tie in Tatum Wells, seventeen million dollar project that we took along on, to tie in that to Double Eagle to bring in more water. We're looking at more water rights, we're looking at sewer projects, old infrastructure, new infrastructure, housing. We've tried to get the five hundred acres purchased up north from BLM, which with the government shutdown, we should have owned it in September, but of course, we're working at the speed of federal government now. But with that comes in, infrastructure comes in, the housing. We are working on twenty acres with Carlsen Ranch for workforce housing. We just purchased ten acres, twenty acres, I'm sorry, from the schools to move forward with a apartment complex and potentially a single-family residence. And with that, our goal is to provide a three-bedroom home for two hundred and twenty thousand to our workforce. Obviously owner occupied, there's a lot of rules that go between that, but that, that house is not available in the market right now. And I don't think five hundred of them would, would, would quench the thirst right now, just, they're, they're just such a need. There's so many people that would just like to upgrade but can't afford four hundred thousand dollar home. It's not available, so we have to get involved in, and from old aging infrastructure to new infrastructure, you pick the project and the ten million is gone. I mean, it's, it's that, that much of a need right now and I think we all see that. And so this, this money would, would hugely benefit the city of Carlsbad. Like I said, we're dealing with old and new and trying to do them all at the same time and it's just a tough time. And with this growth, we have to harness this growth and secure our residents. Anyone just moving around in the morning, how many residents from Roswell, Hobbs, surrounding communities coming to our community to work? They should be living here, but there's nothing to move into. It's tough. We all have recruitment issues. I, I believe one out of three people that we try to hire and bring into this area turned the job down. They can't afford to move, their wages are great, can't afford the housing. I mean, it is a huge problem that we, we all need to address and I really appreciate the commission looking into this and thank you, Mr. Gallagher, for, for bringing this up in, in this, in this matter because this is going to be a huge help for our community. And I'll stand for any questions.
I have, I, I like the, the way you talked about having shovel-ready projects. You would be coming to the commission requesting funding for projects that weren't shovel-ready.
Correct, they are shovel-ready. We, like I said, we just purchased the twenty acres, probably, the deal should be done this week in the city who owns that land. And it'll be, it'll be ready to start, start putting infrastructure for these housing. We're finishing out a contract with C D O D to have these houses built. Finally, if we have a builder, we have a developer to start that project. So I mean, they're, they're ready. And then like I said, the twenty acres with the Carlsen Ranch. Soon as we come to an agreement on the deal and timelines, we'll be putting pipe in the ground. I mean, these are shovel-ready, ready-to-be-built homes. And like I said, we are ready to have a contractor, ready to go.
Because they're still in the concept stage.
Oh no.
As you know, that can lead down to years. That's all we're looking to do.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, we could have stick-built homes ready to move in in nine months.
These are homes.
Homes, homes, site-built, stick-built homes. And our target is, like I said, two twenty for a thirteen hundred square foot, three bed, two bath. Probably only going to get a carport, I don't think we can put the garage at that price, but we're working on it. But, but again, these houses, we have five properties, potentially nine for infield to prove the project, prove the price point and show the, the quality of the work. So it's not that we're going to just dump a hundred homes and not know what we're getting. We, we will start those projects hopefully December, January, when we're going to start building homes.
I think, not, not everybody lives in the cities everybody, but everybody does live in the county. That being said, most county residents are also using city amenities. Everybody's coming to the city for one thing or another, we're spending money within the cities. So this is a chance to help out and for the county to actually give back for the growth and harness this opportunity to, for our community to grow. The housing costs are definitely much higher by part of the world than in others. And when it comes to job recruitment, which something was mentioned earlier, that's, that's a big point. If we can get these projects going and have the ability to bring people in, then it not only helps the city, the county, it helps industry and everybody else alike because it brings in affordable housing for a labor force to come along with it. So I, I think this is a great idea. I know that it's a discussion item, but I'm actually wanting to, instead of moving at the speed of government, is there a way that we can get this going now to where we can catapult this into happening quicker, sooner than later?
Yeah, well, we've talked about it for years at the commission, since I've been on the commission.
We had a presentation a few years ago when, when Mayor Henry was on, I think someone came from Las Cruces and it was unbelievable, the numbers that they showed, you know, of how many homes were needed, you know, in just Eddie County. And it has resonated with me since then.
You know, we've talked about it, talked about it, talked about it, and this is our opportunity to do something about it.
And you know, I always come back to, you know, as Kyle Marksterner said this morning, we have a lot of working poor people here, right? They work several jobs, they, they live with family members, it puts strain on families, you know, that leads to other, you know, complications down the road. If we can encourage people to have something, you know, and, you know, build generational wealth, you know, make an investment for themselves and their families, it's going to sustain them for many, many years to come. And that's what I, you know, why this is very important to me. I want people to have that opportunity, families to have that opportunity.
I, I don't like to see it, again, it has stopped me if I'm speaking out of turn here, but to make a motion to approve, I'm trying to find it.
Frank, you're tied up because of the fact he was on here for discussion.
Discussion.
Yeah, the public has a right to know, we're going to actually take some kind of action, but I think the commission knows.
November eleventh, ten.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
No, but we're coming back on November five.
Oh yeah, coming back on November, uh, ten.
Can we do that? That's the next opportunity we have without her. There's no reason to do it.
Well, I agree, I agree, we could do that. All more about, I think we could do that on that and then for November eighteenth, y'all could come in with the projects.
Yeah. That's, we could move within our.
I agree, so you're better, you're the rest of the nation, that's pretty good.
That's what we'll do. So, so put it on the November eleventh and then on the eighteenth.
Be ready.
And then y'all can come forward and then.
I presented today if y'all want.
Okay, so to be clear, our next, our meeting is on, it's Monday, November ten. And we can, this can be an actual item on the ten.
Yes. Okay.
Well, Madam Chair, Commissioners, it's a pretty big discussion item, so I wanted to bring it to the board first as a discussion before, but I appreciate your comments and we'll move forward as you, as you said.
Good.
Thank you guys. If I could, yeah, thank you so much for the consideration. I mean, as you said, we've talked about this for, for a number of years to get this accomplished. And it's good for, good for Eddie County, I mean, good for both cities. We need help, it's desperate, so thank y'all for the thought.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Now we're moving into consideration of proposed revisions to existing resolution R dash twenty-four dash seventy-two, Eddie County IT user insecurity policy.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners. I'm coming today to discuss two proposed policy items. Policy is typically a word no one enjoys hearing, it's usually, you know, dry and not very fun. But in my role as our IPRA administrative supervisor to Dora and Sienna, who do an amazing job as our IPRA administrative coordinators, in processing public records requests, the question often arises as to what constitutes a record. And in the digital age that we're operating in as a very large organization, we're doing business on social media, both social media accounts that the county has established in its official capacity as well as people speaking in their capacity as members of this organization on other people's social media accounts and platforms. We also are doing a lot of our business now on mobile devices, as we all know, and that can include laptops, that can include cell phones and even iPads. And so when you're talking about proper records management to include retention and disposition and maintenance of records as well as proper provision of inspection of records per the public, you know, the Inspection of Public Records Act or IPRA, what we really are needing as an organization of our size, being a public body per statutes in the state of New Mexico, is the proper policy language to help our staff and our elected officials understand what parameters we're legally operating in and also to establish the proper protocols and procedures to maintain records, dispose of records and just clarify best practices around all this digital and social media activity. And so with that kind of being my general reason for coming to you today, the first of the two items that I'm presenting on is proposed revisions to an existing policy, which is the Eddie County IT user insecurity policy, which was passed in July of twenty twenty-four. And at that time, our county manager had asked then IT Director Carol Hennington to look into putting a policy like that on the books to kind of govern our overall IT security footprint. It's kind of an industry best practice and in the state, we have the State Department of Information Technology and they have published rules. And so Carol referred and leaned on that verbiage and the state agency's rules and kind of a lot of that is what was represented in that policy and it was passed by resolution in July of twenty twenty-four. And so for the second year in a row, we've been retaining as a consulting attorney, Albert Lama, Al Lama, and he specializes in IPRA records management and he works with a lot of entities of our size and caliber in the state to help them really get up to speed on these sorts of things. He reviewed our existing IT user insecurity policy and he found it sufficient, but he thought that we needed a little more specific language regarding social media best practices. And so these proposed revisions here just kind of drill down a little deeper and just are proposed to be additions to the existing policy. I can go a little deeper if you'd like me to, I know we've had a really long trailing agenda today, but they hand out that I've given you kind of overviews what the existing policy does well and then it highlights some of the added verbiage and how it goes a little more specific in social media best practices for elected officials and employees of this organization. So with that, I can go a little deeper if you'd like, I can highlight specifics, but I know it's been a long one. So I'll stand for any questions and if you, if you see fit, I can bring this back for adoption at the November eighteenth commission meeting.
Yeah, I, I went through it, I think it's needed, right? Just to make sure that we're abiding, you know, by the, the state standard and I think we would be fine bringing it forward to the next. And I think we would be fine bringing it forward to the next, sorry, November eighteen meeting.
Okay.
This goes along with that call we had the other day?
Yes, absolutely. Yes. Okay, so with that, I'll move on to trailing agenda item number twenty, which is the proposed new policy to be titled Eddie County Mobile Device Security and Usage Policies and Procedures. And what I've given you all as a handout is, uh, a form that would go along with that policy and procedure. And it's an employee consent form, which basically encompasses the essence of the policy, proposed policy itself. And what it does is it really clarifies for each Eddie County elected official and employee what responsibility you're taking on when you utilize a mobile device to conduct county business. And one of the things that this proposed policy and the associated form really clarify, um, and this comes up a lot in I P R, so it's a really important thing. And we would be the first county government, if you all saw fit, to bring this back to November eighteenth to adopt it. The first county government in the state of New Mexico to adopt this sort of a mobile device policy and procedure per Al Lama's research. So that would make you all pioneers, which you are in many other ways, very forward thinking. But what this does is it helps clarify the legal reality, which is that whether you're using a personal mobile device or a county issued mobile device, any business you conduct on that mobile device creates a public record. If you conduct it in your capacity as an elected official or employee of this county organization. And that gets very, you know, challenging to deal with when it comes to public records requests, as well as court ordered requests for records and, um, things associated with litigation. And so this policy and associated form would just put us in a healthier place, in a more robust place as an organization operating in the legal reality of twenty twenty-five and beyond in this state. Um, so with that, I'll stand for any questions and I can drill down to any specifics if you'd like.
I think it speaks to professionalism as well, right? You know, we're professionals representing our public, you know, our constituents. We should be operating, you know, in that fashion. And you're right, you know, about the legality. You know about this much more than we do, you know, about the type of sensitive information you guys are having to go through and pour over every single day. So, um, you know, I, I, I think that it's probably needed and we should be doing this year or other year.
I, I appreciate that. Um, and two things that I want to say that are kind of related and your comments just made me think about this. Last week, I, I traveled with our two I P R administrative coordinators to a statewide I P R conference and, uh, specifically text messages when they get record requested by members of a public body. That was a hot topic on one of the panels. We spent almost an hour and change talking and we had a representative who does I P R for the Department of Health at the state of New Mexico. And they have a really forward thinking approach, like a policy that, or it's not really a policy, it's a procedure that they utilize to obtain and inspect text messages from members of their institution when they get I P R. But it's, it's a real challenge. Everyone's struggling in this state with how to do it and how to do it well. And if we put this in place, the first step would be bringing these back for adoption November eighteenth. But as you may have seen from your calendar invites, we've also calendared December training with Albert Lama, also to include Cass, my I P R admin team, Mike, um, to train all of our elected officials and administrative department heads and all of our I P R staff countywide on the policies and on the best practices because of the legal reality that we're operating in. Um, and so this coupled with that training would put us in a really, really good place to really start getting all on the same page. And one of my favorite aspects of what we can accomplish by getting this on the books and then holding those trainings is that we can hopefully minimize frivolous lawsuits, which we've seen more than enough of, which aim to exploit inconsistencies in our behavior as county employees and elected officials in our social media practices and our use of mobile devices. And to me, that's one of the biggest wins we can achieve by moving forward with this. So again, stand for any questions, happy to add any more specifics and I appreciate your time.
So we move it forward to the November eighteen.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving into our resolution and agreement consent agenda. Do we have any items we would like to discuss further?
What's the change to the? Let's see here. The, the changes to the.
I meant.
Board. Board appointments and designations.
Oh.
Adrian?
Yes. We are adding a new member of the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board and that's Jessica from the Artesia Chamber of Commerce. We had two vacancies and we're proposing to fill that one vacancy. And then also because of, uh, some of our newest administrative department heads being appointed, we were able to go from, I know for the Community Development Director, who's now Warren Harden, we were able to take away the generic Community Development Director on the committees where that individual sits and to replace that with Warren's name. And those were the only changes.
I want to make sure I keep.
I didn't, I didn't miss something. Hold that. Hold it, hold.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented. Second.
Motion in second, please. Call the vote.
Perova?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Line?
Yes.
Thank you. Now moving on to travel request consent agenda.
A motion to approve it. Sorry.
Motion in two seconds. Please call the vote.
Perova?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Line?
Yes.
Any emergency business for this morning? How about any legislative comments, announcements or updates? Seeing none, oh, we would like to see if we could take a quick five minute break at this point before we move into elected official department updates.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, I feel like, um, we're just gonna do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't think I know what I, I said, I don't consider it a sign.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think that's.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. I don't ever, I don't think I know what I, I said, I don't consider it a sign.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And your broadcast?
Yes. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started.
Yeah.
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 Yes.
Yes.
There you go.
Yeah.
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 True.
Okay. She hit too long.
Alright, thank you. So we'll go ahead, go ahead and move into elected official department comments, announcements, and updates. Uh, first, we have Mr. Gazer Archer.
Hi, Chair Commissioners. Uh, just a few updates in our public works department. Um, Burton Flat is complete between Magnum and Angel Ranch. Um, it is, it was completed yesterday. So, our top ten, we gotta sweep it, but other than that, um, that piece is completed. Tidwell will be completed this afternoon, um, and we were expecting that by November as well. Uh, Dayton is complete as well, so we, we have a few, we, we finished ahead of schedule, beat the weather, and that, that is a huge accomplishment for our contractors and ourselves, so. Um, we beat the weather, we're not rushing against freezing temperatures, so, so that's. Um, Kelly is kicking off. Um, I believe they kicked off yesterday, if not yesterday, it'll be Monday. Um, they'll kick off on that, that'll be a complete reconstruct on it and a little bit of widening, that'll tie into the DOT's, uh, New Mexico thirty-one project that they're working on completing. Um, after Burton Flat's completed, so we'll be sending out, uh, we're just kinda doing a little cleanup right now. Um, probably next week, four mi- four blades will go out. Um, and, and when we can work a fifth one, we will. Um, but also our pothole crew on top of that is going and, and they're fixing to start doing kind of a pothole blitz, if you will, and start maintenance for our winter months and get everything patched and, and completed that we've. You know, we've been working on projects so hard, now we're kinda shifting gears, going back to maintenance, um, dirt roads, um, that sort of thing. And then after the, when we start back on projects at the first of the year, they'll go back to, uh, we'll have one blade running consistently. We have three hundred miles of dirt road, and I'd like those to be touched, right now, they're only being touched about once a year, and I would like those to be touched three times a year. It's kinda my plan moving forward. Um, they, that, that's a significant increase in, in, you know, maintenance, and that requires more fuel, more, more, uh, personnel, i- it. So, i- it's just kind of a shift in our dynamics, but, uh, nothing we can't handle. Um, environmental, our loving transfer station has been going great. Um, the first few weeks, we were averaging between fifteen people to twenty. I think our number last week was forty-three, so we doubled our numbers in a, in a few weeks, and I expect that to only grow. Um, vector updates, um, so we had, uh, two employees that were not certified to spray weeds, now they are. All three of them went and got another certification, and now we can spray more weeds in the county. Um, that, then that, that's gonna be pointed at, um, locations, our, our facilities and that sort of thing. They'll be able to spray weeds at our facilities, and then also maintain the noxious weeds that are in our rightways. Um, but, so it doesn't get to cattle, horses, that sort of thing. Um, and we will continue mosquito fogging until the temperature's below fifty degrees. We hit that yesterday, it was forty-two degrees when I left my house. Um, we, we have those days. Right now, we're in a weird transition where they can, they'll wait, and then certain areas will be over fifty degrees, certain won't. I- i- it's just, they go chase the weather, basically. If they can fog, they fog, they, if they have the wind to fog, they fog that as well, so. That, that's, that's pretty much.
Question, are you?
Yes, sir.
Calvany Road, we talked about it.
Yes, sir. So, um, we got a proposal, we're gonna do a tom on top of Calvany.
You said that.
Um, so, Calvany, the oil was sprayed a little heavy. Um, a little heavier than we anticipated, um, I think with the weather, and then we also ran into, there were three drilling sites on that road at that, while we were trying to chip that, so. Um, there's a couple of rough areas in that, but that tom will go in there and take out those rough areas. I- it's, it's cheaper than doing a complete rebuild on it again, um, and it'll make it last longer.
I mean, since we don't have to really wait for, it's not like the seal coat.
Yes.
We don't have to, we don't have to wait on that, so will it be in this year?
Yes, sir, this, they, they will probably move, um, once they're done with, uh, tid will getting that swept off and everything. Um, I've gotta get a purchase order created and, and get that, and they will move to that tom this year, that'll, that'll be done before. It can go, tom can go down, um, they, they haul it in like asphalt, so it's heated at the plant, and so we can pave a lot longer than we can chip seal. Um, the tom will be laid down like a pavement, and, and that will clean that up. And also on Kelly Road, we're gonna try something a little different that we haven't tried before. Being that that is heavy, heavily traveled with, with roads and i- it, it's not an experiment so much, it's been done, that's how Texas does a lot of their roads. So, we're gonna put a chip down on Kelly, that'll be done this year, and then that's, we're gonna put a tom on there, and then we're gonna come back in April after that's had time to settle, and we'll put a chip on that, and that'll give you the texture on that road to the, um, gripping, uh, if you will, so that, so that we're not sliding guys around on, on top of things that they shouldn't be sliding around like.
No, I mean, you know, I, I just be getting calls on the Calvany Road.
Yes, sir. Well, that, that'll be done before the end of this year.
Yeah. And, and I knew we don't have to follow the same protocol, let's do the, uh, seal coat for weather.
Yes, sir.
As long as it's certain, I should work it.
Yeah, I, I think the ground temperature has to be sixty, yes, sir, and so we're, we're still managing that. I mean, we, we laid a, we laid our, it, it's gotta be seventy for our chip seal, and we laid that earlier this week, so. Um, I, I would anticipate in the next few weeks, they'll be jumping on that, just get that started.
Yeah, it was kinda cold yesterday morning, but then it was ninety-four when I was at home.
Yeah, yeah, uh, that really helps our ground too, so I mean, that ground, it, it holds our ground temperature, so we're still able, like I said, we didn't run into any issues where we have in the past that run into like, ooh, can we make it or not? Uh, this year, we were able to, to complete what we were trying to get done. We, we beat the weather, so that, that was fantastic.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You run water behind blades, right?
Yes, sir, there'll, there'll be a water truck assigned to each blade, um, uh, some of them too, depend, depending on location and, and where, what we have available, but yes, sir, that'll be water with all blades.
Thanks for that travels, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it. Alright, next we have HR department updates, we'll see you in the baskets.
Okay, my HR updates for September, um, through our applicant tracking system, we have nine thousand four hundred and nineteen visitors to our site, our career site. Uh, year-to-date, we've had seventy-five thousand two hundred and seventy-five, uh, hits to our site. Um, the HR staff processed thirty-nine applications in September, conducted fifty-nine interviews, um, our current average time to hire is fifty-eight days. Um, September new hires, we had eight, year-to-date, we've had seventy-four new hires, uh, resignations, terminations, uh, retirements, we've had six for the month of September, year-to-date, we're at sixty-one. Our current vacancy rate as of September thirtieth is at twenty-three point eighteen percent. Um, our, our turnover rate as of nine-thirty is fifteen point seven-three percent, and right now, we have open enrollments for benefits, it started October twentieth, then we'll run through November the twentieth, so. If you have any changes to make, come see us.
How many new employees do we have?
Right, currently, three hundred and eighty-five as of the last payroll. We're allocated, uh, four hundred and seventy-nine, ninety-six, I'm sorry, four hundred and ninety-six.
Yes.
What happened in the average fifty-eight days of time to hire?
So, a lot of stuff goes into play on that, so like, if we have a pool of applicants, somebody hires, they decide they don't want, and they pull from their pool. Depending on what the date that they applied at to the date that they were physically hired, it counts that. So like, right now, we're taking applications for sheriffs, deputies, and firefighters, the longer they stay in the pool, um, and when we hire them, it affects our time to hire data as well. So, a lot of factors go into it, but we're, other than those, we're averaging about in the forties.
Last May, you said we were at forty-four, and now.
Yeah.
We're working to get better, now I'm up, with it up.
Yeah. That actually should get a lot more better too, because we have that second generalist hired, so it'll be a lot better. But yeah, like I said, the longer they stay in the pool, if we don't hire them, it's gonna affect our time to hire.
I was just trying to understand now that.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, uh, detention center updates, Gordon, let's go.
Good morning, manager, commissioners. Um, still processing, working through the new detention, uh, we've gone, gone through our ninety percent build, uh, we did some landscaping, uh, designs, uh, give them some suggestions and some, uh, kinda, some, some good feedback of what we want it to look like. Um, we're gonna, at some point, need to sit down with the, the business manager and the county manager, look at some of the verbiage that we need to be putting in to, for solicitation of a contract. Uh, new, uh, it's moving, it's moving well. Um, for the jail side of things, we had two hundred intakes, uh, that came in, Artesia had two hundred and six, uh, visits at their ASU department, we had five hundred and thirty-nine visits at the Carlsbad office. So, uh, that, that department's moved without a doubt. Um, we hired a new counselor, uh, Shawna Larry, uh, she comes over from, she's one of those ladies that's driving from Lee County because of, kinda the same thing, the housing, uh, trying to get her to, to find something, and it's a struggle. It's kinda, kinda interesting hearing this verbiage up here, because we have some officers and stuff that drive over, just, we, we pay well, but they just can't afford to, to stay or find adequate housing. Uh, but she's, uh, got years and years of service, years and years in the field, so, uh, she'll be a great asset to us. Any questions?
Hello?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Roberta, uh, finance department updates.
Madam Chair Commissioners, um, again, I have put up our September, um, transactions for you, for our accounts payable, our P cards, our payroll. Um, just as usual, we process around the same, um, dollar amount and, um, transaction amount for each one of those, if you have any questions on those. Um, for our formal solicitations, as you guys just, um, reviewed and approved, um, our IFB and our RFP, Toni's been doing a great job in not only learning the process, but, um, getting out a lot of these solicitations. She's gonna be looking at issuing another RFP for the courthouse renovation here within the next week. Um, currently, we have thirty-two active grants totaling over, a little over fifteen million dollars. Um, out of that, we have about six federal grants for eight point seven million and twenty-five state grants for a little over six million dollars. Again, Norma, our grant administrator's been doing an amazing job, um, she just started the new role in January, and she's been doing a great job reaching out to all the elected official and department heads on their grant needs. Um, since I wrote this, um, I'm hoping not to be down two positions, um, we're only eight, there's only a total of eight of us in the finance department, so being down two positions is actually quite a bit for finance. It puts a lot of, of burden on us currently, right now, um, Jessica, the assistant finance director, does accounts payable, that's kinda the main role, the staff account that we're needing to hire, so that person could be a backup to all the other positions, because we only have one position doing each role. So, when that person is not here, uh, Jessica and myself are doing those job functions. Um, so, I did wanna give a shout-out to the new HR generalist, Megan, she was fantastic, and I'll tell you why. And I say I'm hoping to be only down one position, because last Thursday, Jessica and I went through applications, and on Friday, we were interviewing, and on Friday, we were extending a job offer. So, I'm hoping we're only down one position, but it just shows, um, HR is doing a wonderful job in getting, trying to get us those positions filled. Uh, and then last but not least, we do have two staff members attending the New Mexico Public Purchasing Association Conference. Uh, it's an annual conference, it's really, really great, uh, throughout the state, all of the, um, purchasing, our procurement officers go to it each year. Um, so we have two of our staff going this year. I do wanna say thank you for everyone for being patient, because we're down two positions, like I said. Um, we are having to cancel a couple check runs, um, every so often, and requisitions, because we do have staff out, um, attending trains, so. That, that's all I have.
Oh, how, how's our audit now?
It is.
Are they out to work?
It is, yes, still ongoing, um, we're still doing remote work with them, um, we're hoping to finish up, we should finish up around a little bit before Thanksgiving. Um, we do have, um, some information that was sent to us, the twenty-twenty-five compliance, um, is still in final review, so the auditors, the IPAs have not got that. So, tentatively, I believe that our due dates are being pushed back, the counties specifically for us, our due date is December first of each year that we have to get it to the o- office of the state auditor. I believe they're gonna push that date back about fifteen days, but they're still working on that because of the government shutdown, and depending on when that compliance, that final compliance comes out, we'll know more about our due dates. But, for right now, our IPAs are still working to still meet that December first deadline, like nothing has changed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Jason Porez, IT department updates.
Good morning, madam chair, commissioners. Um, our IT department did fill one of our tech positions. The hire is currently going through the HR process, so we're looking forward to getting that person onboard. Uh, Mark Creo and myself also, we attended the Rita Tech Town Hall. Um, the town hall gathers IT people. This is the second year they've done it, and it, this year was bigger than last year, they added a public safety pack. So, I think Rita's done a good job with that. Maybe in the future, we can collaborate with them, make it even larger. Um, this month is cybersecurity month, and some of the thoughts I've had, not really mature yet, but, uh, some way for our IT department to work with our civic engagement group to bring awareness to our community. That way, they have a resource to go to to find out what kind of scams and whatnot are happening in our community. Um, I know the sheriff does put out some alerts out there, so maybe can get his help as well, of how we can give people some answers and what to do if it happens, so. Um, my last point is not on this list, but, uh, we did resolve a low-mean email issue we had in our department. Basically, we had a server that wasn't cooperating with everybody, everything else, it was standing in the corner saying, no. So, we got that resolved, and it's gonna open up a lot of pathways, there were some infrastructures changes, and I'm oddly excited about. And I, uh, do believe Mr. Tabor would be good on the Dancing with the Stars.
Put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
That's all.
Good morning.
Yeah, certainly, that they wasn't listening, yeah.
What?
You're officially nominated.
No.
You're officially nominated.
Dancing with the Stars. Do what?
Turn those hands up, pass.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, now we have fire rescue department updates, uh, Joshua.
Madam Chair Commissioners, um, statistics for September, we had two more calls, or two less calls this year than we did last year, so that's from the first time that we've encountered that throughout the year. We're still at eleven point six-five percent increase in requests for services. Um, I just wanna remind you, this is only on emergency response, so we are working on a factor for code enforcement and all the other things, so we can address those. Uh, major incidents or projects and updates this month, fire prevention month, um, this was the first time I've ever had to tell anybody no. We had to unfortunately tell City of Carlsbad, no, we couldn't assist, because we had so much going on, so. Throughout the month, we're, we're gonna have over twenty, um, events with, um, a ton of man hours, so. Um, loving schools, we've engaged all the way up to mid-school, we're working on engaging the high school, so those are grade levels that are usually neglected during fire prevention month, which, this year, with it being lithium-ion batteries, obviously, the older kids are probably more of the ones we need to focus on, so. We're working on that. The, uh, State Fire Marshal's Office will be here tomorrow, they're gonna come visit our training site, since the upgrade they all approved, and they're looking to take their flammable liquid pit, which is one of two left in the whole entire nation that actually burns flammable liquids, and transition it into the propane prop like we have, so. Um, and then they're also looking at taking some of our building props that are, again, Class B propane, and, and enacting that up there in Secoro to try to enhance their training capabilities, so. They'll be in town tomorrow, um, and then staffing update, the goal is November seventeenth, if I'm not mistaken, we will be fully staffed. See what happens between now and then. Um, if it all goes well, we'll have two to three that go to academy, and this will be our first full academy that will be partnering with Southeast New Mexico College to put them through the fire. They'll come out in the summertime, um, do OJT, and then they'll go back in and they'll take their EMT basic and then follow it up with an advanced EMT, so they'll actually come out of fire academy pot, potentially as an advanced EMT, so, it'll be a good thing. And then I wanna follow up, uh, we had public comments, I just wanna follow up on that. Uh, code enforcement's going out there bi-weekly, um, all the neighbors in the neighborhood are complying, um. The camper, I will personally go out and address with, with him. Um, it appears to be condensation just from all the moisture that we've had, and it's puddling under, it sits in the shade, so. They did cooperate with it to the back to hopefully allow it some more ventilation to be able to dry out, so. Aside from that, I don't have anything else, any questions?
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You know, that, that's not an update. That's what I was wondering, so. What are we congratulating for, Chief Matt?
I re- I received the Fire Chief of the Year through the New Mexico Fire EMS Expo, so that is recognized as the Fire Chief of the Year throughout the state of New Mexico, so. Huge accomplishment, thank you to the commissioners, county manager, and all the other departments, um, like I told them in the department meeting, it's definitely a team effort, we couldn't accomplish what we accomplished without the whole entire community and the county backing us, so I greatly appreciate all of you as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a good day.
Alright, uh, as I understand, uh, Ms. Hampton is at a conference, um, is anyone doing her, no, okay, so we're gonna move over to emergency services department updates, Ms. Jennifer Archer.
Good morning, madam chair, commissioners. Mine should only take about ten minutes. Um, so, we recently had a visit from Homeland Security, um, and it went really well, they've been visiting our LEPC meetings, um, here lately, and, um, we've been able to, um, collaborate with them more. Um, they are joining us on a local level as well, which is, um, in the past, I would say probably seven, six or seven years ago, it did happen, then it stopped for a little bit, and so now it's picking up again, and we appreciate that. Um, and through those meetings, we were able to identify, um, some assistance that's offered by the state for like, um, cyber security plans that we can upgrade and im- implementing those in our EOPs, our emergency operation plans as well, so those were good. So, it was a beneficial meeting, and, uh.
Blessings, thank you.
They plan on trying to do those more often. And then, um, just an FYI, we will be offering our, um, employees and families of employees, uh, vaccinations with the help of the, um, fire service that is gonna be putting those in your arms. Um, so, we appreciate their collaboration and partnership, and so if you guys are interested, please reach out to our safety department. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to county managers' comments, announcements, updates. Alright, county commissioners, comments, commissioner first.
Uh, well, I, I wanna commend our departments and department heads, um, on working and being so diligent and to streamline operations that have been around, that have been, that, that have been happening, and, uh, just to make them a lot more efficient, and instead of sitting back and just rolling the things like, and see, I think that speaks a lot to our county.
Ms. Jennifer? I have nothing at this time. Ms. Roberta?
Yes, uh, at our September meeting, I called to ask, uh, the NMDOT for having, uh, withdrawn two projects in, in, uh, our area, one of them being out, where they're working on what's gonna tie onto the project, they're finishing up on thirty-one, and, uh, because of an error in what they had done. And I believe that we can call as a task, if they correct those things, and then you should give them that a boy, and so now they have reissued those two POs, and so we're gonna have our projects, and so, uh, exactly, good deal, so, that's all I have.
Ms. Roberta?
I'm just excited to see the collaboration between the county and municipalities, um, something that's been a priority of mine since I took office, and I'm glad to see that there's actually some of that coming to fruition, both with the county, both cities that were here today, as well as just hearing that, uh, Eddie County Fire Rescue Department with Southeast New Mexico College to go, to, to get that going, just to see everything, uh, local collaborations, huge. And pretty exciting. Also, between the last meeting and now, I attended the Mexico counties meeting, hopefully, on the November eighteenth meeting, we will have a resolution for the commission to show, to show our support of the legislative priorities that New Mexico counties has, is going to be lobbying for in the next legislative session. The first and foremost of those priorities will be imperative for our, so, um, that hopefully will be on the, the next agenda and something that we can show our supporter.
Thank you. Well, again, you know, I love showcasing what Eddie County does well, I love being the front runners in important, you know, topics that are going to not only protect our citizens, but our employees. Um, congratulations, Chief Matt, like what an honor, and I'm so happy for you. Um, it is also, uh, breast cancer awareness month, so for all you ladies and anybody that has a special lady in your life, make sure that we're recommending getting that screening done, early detection saves lives, as it saved my mother's life this year, she is now cancer-free, so, I really appreciate the work. So I really appreciate the work of everybody to do those things. So just please, you know, take a moment in time to just reflect on your own health and like I said, those special ladies in your lives. So, um, with that, that is all I have. And thank you.